I'm calling this meeting to order. I'd ask the clerk to read the roll. Call the roll, please.
A special session has been held Thursday, March the 6th, 2014 at 6:00 PM in the Commissioned Chambers regarding the discussion on the Moody's Rating Agency. An executive session will be held immediately after the 7:00 PM full commission meeting in the ninth floor conference room regarding personnel. Roll call. Mugia?
Here.
Maddox? Kane? Markley?
Here.
Walters? Philbrook?
Here.
Walker? Townsend? McKernan?
Here.
Holland?
Here. I want to thank you all for coming. I want to thank everyone in the audience tonight. It's you. We're glad you're here. We have a Boy Scout representative. We're a full house. I don't know, introducing that we're having a discussion on credit rating apparently did not draw the large crowd. Now, I don't want you to think, I don't know, I always, you saw the crowd when you walked in, you thought this is going to be the biggest credit rating meeting ever? They're lined up to hear about it. So, we are glad that you're here and very much appreciate Moody's for coming in for the site visit, but we're going to turn it over to our CFO, Lou Levin.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Hayes, Commissioners. We were fortunate this afternoon that Moody's was able to be in town. We spent several hours with them. We started in the Village West area and we actually, North Point Development hosted us for an hour and talked about some of their projects and we were fortunate enough to tour Village West apartments. I think this is an important presentation and it's sort of a prelude to our strategic planning session on Saturday. With me this evening is Chandra Gosal, Tatiana Killen from Moody's, and Dave McGilvery, our financial advisor. I just have a few brief comments. And in this slide, I actually put together yesterday, it was sort of interesting. In the paper yesterday, I saw a blurb related to Chicago's credit rating. And I think there was a couple of things pertinent to the action that was taken. They had a downgrade in their credit rating and it was related essentially to two main factors. Their future debt liabilities do in part to pension liabilities and their inability to have a structural budget balance. And what that means is simply expenditures were exceeding revenues. And so, I think as we go forth into our budget discussion, we know the, I don't think we can understate the importance of having a structural budget that's balanced. We don't want to see actions like what occurred in Chicago occurred to us. And I just thought it was a relevant article as we enter into this presentation and our future deliberations. With that said, I'm going to turn it over to Chandra to begin the presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor, Mr. Hayes, Commissioners, I want to thank you very much for this opportunity, for this audience. I really do appreciate your time and giving us the chance to speak with you on something that we always enjoy talking about, which is our bond rating methodology for general obligation bonds. My name is Chandra Gosal, a local government rating analyst based out of Moody's Chicago office. I'm joined by my colleague Tatiana Killen, also a local government analyst in our Chicago office. We both are two of the members of what we call the Kansas Team, who primarily do schools, cities, counties, utilities, special districts, you name it, in the state of Kansas. We also work in other states like Ohio and Indiana, but we focus primarily on local governments in the Midwest, including Kansas. Just to give you a quick preview of what we can expect to talk about this evening, I will start, talk broadly about the changes that we recently implemented in January of 2014 to our local government geo-bond rating methodology. And then, the second part, we'll talk about the methodology itself in some more detail. Tatiana and I will go back and forth focusing on each of the four major rating criteria. And then, I will conclude talking about, briefly, about what we view as the sector as a whole for local governments as a firm. And then, I guess I'll hand it over to Dave McGilvery, too, to wrap things up. The first thing I wanted to talk about is our methodology had always applied weights to the four factors that I alluded to. And those factors remain unchanged with this new iteration that came out in January of 2014. The way we evaluate or the framework that we use to evaluate the credit strength of a local government is by looking at the strength of its economy and tax base, the strength of its financial operations and financial position, the strength of its management team and management practices, and the amount of debt and pension burdens that it bears. So, that had always been the case and remains the case. But what you can see from the slide there that we changed was the economy and tax base factor used to be 40% of the rating and now it's 30%. Management and finances remain the same and the debt and pension metric were increased from 10% to 20%. To go briefly into the broad rationale as to why we as a firm adjusted the methodology this way to de-emphasize somewhat the economy and tax base strength and add a little bit to debt and pension liabilities was because we found largely, especially in our experiences over the last five years, that despite a lot of local governments' large property and income wealth, that those didn't always transition into stable, strong financial operations, meaning strong tax bases didn't always translate into revenues, whether it was for statutory reasons and tax caps, or political reasons, or legislative reasons, or what have you. What we also found during the downturn was the growing pressures related to pension liabilities. You know, pension is something that we view as debt-like, not exactly like debt, but very similar, in the sense that it is a long-term liability. And we found that over the recent history, that pension challenges have become more to the forefront as a credit pressure as time has gone on, which again broadly speaks to the reallocation. In addition to adjusting the weights for our local government methodology, the other major change that was introduced was a quantitative scorecard, which has 13 data points that we put in, unique to each individual local government that we have a rating on, and provides what we call a scorecard indicated unadjusted credit rating. Now, the scorecard is used as a tool for transparency to show using a lot of illustrative data points that reflect our methodology, methodological priorities, where each of those data points fits for an individual municipality vis a vis our criteria. And you'll see the scorecard in some detail in the following slides. But what I want to emphasize is the reason for the scorecard was to enhance the transparency. While we always had weightings on criteria, we think that this allows for a more detailed view as to where, if you can look at each of the criteria and see where you fall along the rating spectrum. What I want to emphasize here, and we'll talk about this in some more detail, is that the scorecard is a starting point. And by no means is it an end point of the analysis. The analysis is ultimately always done by people and through our rating committee process. I'm going to hand it over to Tatiana, who's going to talk a little bit about our scorecard and the individual metrics, as well as the economy and tax base sub-factor.
Commissioner Mugia?
Do we have this, because I didn't see it, do we have this presentation where we can, I can't read that. So, I would like to, is there a copy of it somewhere that we can be writing down questions? Or not?
We can provide copies, but actually, this is just showing all the four factors on the same screen. We'll go into each factor separately and discuss the individual sub-factors.
That's great, except it's, and it's okay if you don't have them. I'm just saying it's difficult to, it's a very complex topic unless you are a financial person. And I can't follow along or create questions if I don't have something to look at to be able to make questions.
Sure.
The handout, we're actually passing around a copy of the methodology and its full text, which will include hopefully eligible.
I would refer to page 24 through 26, which shows the scorecard. It's Appendix A, I believe it begins on page 24.
Yes.
Okay. Just keep in mind, I don't, I don't think anyone that's elected up here, I could be wrong, is an accountant. Or, are you, Gal? Okay. Well, you got one out of nine. So, keep your audience in mind, please. We're elected officials. We're not accountants or financial people.
Well, I'll just introduce myself while Dave passes that out. My name is Tatiana Killen and I also work with Chandra in the Moody's Chicago office. And I work in a variety of Midwest states, Kansas, Wisconsin, Illinois, Indiana. And so, we typically in the Midwest, Chicago office cover Midwest credits. I believe this chart is on the page 23.
Ma'am, can you please speak louder?
Sure.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yeah. I mean, you're going to kind of need to move into the mic and speak louder if you would.
Sure. So, this first chart is basically a general overview of the scorecard. We're going to go into each of the factors, but this just illustrates that each of the factors have a separate weighting and that weighting equates out to 100%. So, Chandra and I will go through the, all the four factors and then talk about some of the sub-factors within each factor. Okay? So, the first scorecard factor is the economy and tax base. As Chandra mentioned, this scorecard factor had original weighting of 40%. That weighting was reduced because it reflects our observation that some local governments, there is an inability or unwillingness to convert their tax base strength into revenues. And that could be from property tax caps, it could be anti-tax sentiment, or it could just be a timing issue. And if you can't hear me, please, just let me know and I'll speak up. So, this first scorecard factor, tax base and economy, is divided evenly between three sub-factors, which is the tax base size or the full value, the full value per capita, and the social economic indices, which we're using median family income. So, the tax base size is generally, each category shows you the range within each category. You can see where a particular local government would fall based on their full valuation number. The full value per capita is a measure of the tax base on a per-resident level. And the social economic indices, the median family income, is based on, it's a measure of the strength and resiliency of the tax base. Just a couple of things to point out here is that typically, as you would see, local governments that have a wealthier tax base, they're able to absorb any sort of property tax increase. And they also have the ability to sustain sort of sales tax revenues. And also, you know, there's more revenue flexibility because they're able, they have the wealth levels to absorb any sort of changes in the property taxes, or if there is any sort of change with sales taxes. And the next scorecard factor is finances. And they're all, again, on page 24 and 25. And we'll just go through each one separately.
Thanks, Tatiana. And I just want to emphasize that these statistics are illustrative and not comprehensive by any means in terms of what we look at when we're evaluating the credit quality of a municipality. Again, the primary goal for the scorecard was to enhance transparency with respect to our methodology. And again, it's not a ratings calculator. So, these are four data points. And as you can see from the appendix, two of them are looking at reserve levels. Fund balance, which is basically your, if you're looking at it, it's your cash carryover at the end of each year. And we compare that, that percentage balance we look at compared to your total revenues that are collected. And the reason that we look at that, and generally speaking, as you can see within these tranches of AAA, AA, A, the higher that percentage number is, from a credit perspective, the stronger the credit is typically, at least from this criteria. And the reason is, and we found this to be true during the recession, is that when municipalities have a stronger fund balance and stronger cash reserves, they were more able to withstand fluctuations resulting from reduced state aid, reduced federal aid, declines in sensitive revenues like sales taxes or charges for services. So, they were able to withstand the revenue declines with this cushion while they were trying to structurally balance their budget by reducing expenditures to reach operational balance. And from a credit standpoint, the more reserves are in place, the more of a cushion that's in place, the stronger municipality has an ability to withstand those kinds of changes in broader economic conditions. So, here, we're looking at a couple of things. Fund balance is a percentage of revenue and cash balance is a percentage of revenue. And that's sort of the difference between cash and your, and your cash plus receivables, really, is the difference between those. And in addition to that, sorry, I won't get into too much of the weeds. I apologize.
I mean, so, I'm going to have to ask you to repeat. I'm really sorry. The last sentence that you're saying, there's a cash balance and there's a fund balance. And what would be the difference?
It's usually the receivables, you know, and Lou, do you want, Lou pointed, he told, he warned me against getting into too much detail. And I apologize for saying that oftentimes, those numbers are both very close, but they're both effectively measures of how much municipality has in terms of a savings account in case there are pressures on their revenues. That's conceptually what we're looking at. And they're both just sort of different sides of the same coin.
So, we have a savings account and we have a fund balance here at the end by government?
That's, the savings account would be the fund balances. They're sort of the way that I would describe.
So, it's the same thing?
Basically, the same thing, yes.
Okay.
For all intensive purposes, they're very similar. In addition to looking at just a point-in-time fund balance number, usually the year-end fund balance number is what we look at because that's what's reported in financial statements. We also try to look at the trends in fund balances to see if your fund balances have increased over a five-year period. So, not only are we looking at point-in-time reserve levels or fund balance levels, we're also trying to determine the direction that these reserve levels are going in. And that metric is more positive from a credit standpoint, the higher it is, meaning the more your fund balance has grown over a period of time, the better from a scorecard perspective that that metric would score. And you can see the individual, the numerical details within each of those. But again, as I said, you know, there are other things that we look at from a methodology standpoint that are not limited to the scorecard inputs. For example, we know that some municipalities have funds outside of the general fund. So, when we're primarily focusing on the general fund and the municipality's main operating funds, we understand that there can be capital projects funds and other things that are contained that would affect the financial position of municipality. So, that's where there's a difference between what's presented in the scorecard versus what is discussed in much more detail during the rating committee process.
Can you give me an example of a fund outside of your general fund that a municipality might have that might help their credit rating?
It's not so much the fund itself that would help a credit rating. It could be anything. But if a fund has available fund balance that are, that can be used to close operational gaps or be used as a buffer or rainy day type fund, it doesn't matter whether it's called a capital projects fund or a budget stabilization fund or anything. It just has to be available for that purpose.
So, there are municipalities that in addition to their fund balance, set aside a separate fund that if something goes wrong, like for example, the recession we just went through, there is this, in addition to the fund balance, their reserve fund?
There can be.
I think Lou's going to respond to that.
I'll say a good example.
I get that, Lou. You may not want to allow it.
A good example in our instance is the dedicated sales tax. We've been able to use that to support some general government operations, general fund operations. We dedicated a portion of it certainly for new projects, new investment in equipment, as well as infrastructure. But that's been a fund that's really been, helped us stabilize the general fund. And I'll cite that as an example.
And that's really all I had for the financial portion of the scorecard. And Tatiana will talk about our management assertions.
So, the management portion is broken into two sub-factors, institutional framework and then operating history. Institutional framework is a new financial input for local governments. And that's a tool that we use to focus on the legal ability of a local government to match revenues with expenditures. And it's basically, basically based on the legal apparatus. And it's a standard input for all state and sector combinations. So, for instance, all Kansas counties have the same institutional framework score. All cities in Kansas have the same institutional framework score and schools and so forth. And the operating history, the other sub-factor, is the practical application of that sort of institutional framework where we measure the operating history of a local government to determine, have they been able to historically match revenues with expenditures? And if you see the various categories, it's basically one times calculation where we're looking at is revenues matching expenditures on a year-to-year basis. If there's fluctuations in those year-to-year calculations, then for us, that could mean that there's structural imbalance and that the individual local government hasn't been able to budget effectively to match their actual incoming revenues or their actual expenditures.
Can I interrupt? Commissioner Philbrook?
Okay. So, I would like a couple of examples, if you don't mind. So, on the institutional framework, you say that's a new one. I would like an example of a poor and of a very strong, to kind of give me an idea of exactly what you're talking about.
Well, let's say, for instance, on the strong end, a local government has the ability, there's unlimited property tax caps. So, they have the ability to raise revenues to offset any sort of increase on expenditure end. Or is there flexibility afforded to that local government to make expenditure reductions where they see fit? Or is there some sort of state legislative framework that won't allow them to either increase property taxes or implement a sales tax or, in other states, occupational taxes, things along that line? Poor, a very poor or poor score would mean those things where they, they're limited by property tax caps or there's other sort of legal, I would say, there's, the state framework won't allow them to have that flexibility to either have revenue enhancements or make expenditure reductions.
There's some other words that can't go out and have bake sales. They're limited by all the rules of the state and the area they're in. And they can't raise money any other legal way. Okay.
Yes.
Well, and I can give you an example of that. There's legislation right now pending in Kansas. It's, it comes around periodically where they want to put a cap on a maximum percentage of increase on your property tax. So, for instance, they'll say that you can only raise your property taxes an equivalent percentage of the cost of living increase that year. So, if the cost of living only went up 1.5%, the maximum increase you could make on your property tax would be 1.5%. So, there are state law, and there are states that do that. There are states that have maximum caps in terms of percentage of increase of property tax that the local governments can do. And those are set at the state level. So, every city and county in that state would be ranked accordingly, knowing that they don't have the flexibility to raise the revenue they may need in a particular year. Does that make sense?
And I will say for counties and I believe also cities, the institutional framework for Kansas counties and cities is double A, which is strong.
And if some of this legislation passed, it could lower the credit rating for every city and county in the state?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that it would lower the credit rating for every local government. What I will say is that there may be a discussion about, does this institutional framework score change given the new limitations?
Thank you.
And so, I believe, and this is just showing the institutional framework calculation and I believe.
Not to interrupt you, but before you get too far, you said, you just answered a question by saying, unless, whether the institutional framework is appropriate for that state. So, who again determines the institutional framework for a particular state?
Well, that's determined.
Moody's does.
Yes. Yes. That's our own internal sort of calculation.
The institutional framework for Iowa might be different than Kansas, but you base that institutional framework on the laws that the state has set up?
Yes.
In order so that politics or?
So, the institutional framework for an Iowa county may be different from an institutional framework score for a Kansas county.
I think Dave's going to respond, too.
Just a little bit, Kansas has a preferential, I mean beneficial to you, as compared to Missouri. Missouri has more structure, more limitations on local government. So, they have a more adverse credit rating situation for a city or a county in Missouri as compared to Kansas. It's the rules they gain through statute.
Right. I guess what I'm getting to is, what the mayor was referring to is if this law does change, you know, I would be concerned that our credit rating would go down. But what you're saying is that if the state did change that law, that you, Moody's, could potentially change the institutional framework for the state of Kansas based on the new law, which may or may not have an impact on our credit rating.
Exactly.
As you see, the institutional framework is 10% of our overall weight. So, if it moves from double A to triple A or double A to A, that may or may not have a difference on the rating of each individual credit. But we do that on basis by case management.
Understood. I get it. Thank you.
And I believe this institutional framework diagram is available in the methodology. I'm not exactly sure what page it's on, but it just gives a little bit.
Page 16.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. It gives a little bit more detail as to how we come to each institutional framework score.
And I'll wrap up the methodology talking about our view on debt and pensions. And as I said, then transition on to briefly the rating process and then our view on the local government sector as a whole. These metrics are measures of both your debt burden and your pension burden. We mentioned, we look at debt relative to two things, your total outstanding debt related to your budget size, your revenues, or your, actually, I should say, net direct debt. to your budget size, your revenues, or your actually, I should say, net direct debt related to your full value. And these are just comparative metrics that we can use when we're looking at municipalities in different states, in different across the country. We can compare quickly by looking at the amount of debt that they have compared to their property values and compared to their budget. We do the same thing with pensions because we view pensions as debt-like long-term liabilities. And we use the two same focal points to measure them against, again, the size of the budget and the size of the tax base. And generally, and this should come as no surprise, the higher the debt burden, you know, the lower on the the rating scale for the scorecard, the outward the result would be. So you see very low figures underneath the triple A or very strong categories, low debt burdens, low pension burdens. And then those grow as you go down the rating scale.
But obviously proportionate to your revenue streams.
Yes, so you know, if you're a small tax base, yes, exactly. It all scales up and down because of that. That's why we look at it as a proportion.
And how does the, for instance, our pensions, the city of Chicago owns their own pensions. We do not own our own pensions. The state of Kansas owns our pension through Capers. How does that factor into your rating? How do our pensions factor into your rating since it's owned by Capers?
So Moody's enhanced its pension methodology in April of 2013. And what we found when evaluating or further evaluating pension conditions of local governments is that 80% of the rated entities that we looked at were participants in cost-sharing plans like Capers or KPNF. What we wanted to do was since we saw significant variance in pension liabilities depending on a lot of the baseline assumptions that were made, namely the discount rate, the rate of return of the assets and things like that, those assumption changes had a radical effect on the funded status of pension plans. You could have two plans that are both 90% funded, but if they use two discount rates, they're really not the same. Seeing that, we wanted to do two things, provide some transparency for us to know that if everybody used the same discount rate, what would their pension liabilities look like? So that's one thing that Moody's did is that we removed the pension plan discount rate assumptions from each plan and applied our own, which is generally more conservative. And to deal with, Mary, to your question, how we allocate pensions to folks that are participating in cost-sharing plans, we had to make an assumption that based on your dollar contribution to the plan and the total dollars that that plan received in contribution, that ratio, let's say you contributed $1,000 to Capers and Capers took in $100,000 that year, your city made 1% of the contributions. So what we did was then allocated 1% of the assets and 1% of the liabilities based on that proportion of contributions. And then we did the same thing where we adjusted the liabilities based on our more conservative discount rate. But that's how we measure that get to our pension liability and it's a Moody's number. It's not reported in your financial statement is what we refer to as the Moody's adjusted pension number. Commissioner Walker, do you have a question?
Well, it doesn't really fit at this point. Do you maintain, many years ago, I had a job that took me to the rating agencies on behalf of the state of Kansas as a very minor player in the process. And you had at that time, a file of what would then be called newspaper clippings. Everything from, you know, events that might have occurred at a commission meeting to, you know, major investments. Do you still maintain that kind of day-to-day contact either, you know, from the existing newspaper structure, a clipping service, or from the internet?
Yes, we do. Things that, you know, we are always monitoring our credit ratings to make sure that they're as accurate as possible and up to date. So insofar as there are news coming out of a municipality that could impact the credit rating, we are always responsible for monitoring that to make sure that the credit rating wouldn't potentially change as a result.
So when GM announced that it was going to expand at our facility and what at least has been portrayed as a major expansion, how would that type of addition to our tax base modify the way you look at at us? Take that as an example and tell me the process that when that news comes in, what happens and how does that immediately affect us or is it postponed until an annual credit review or?
That's a good, our, I can't speak to exactly how it would be received because all of our credit opinions are arrived at from a committee. So I would be remiss as a single analyst to speak about its exact implication. But the way the process works is our surveillance process largely is internal where we take the news, review it internally and decide whether or not a rating action needs to be taken or not. And it's not contingent on annual reviews. It's not contingent on new issuances of bonds. This monitoring process, most of the time internal, takes place on an ongoing basis.
So are you monitoring the governing body of each of your communities?
I don't understand the question.
Well, what role does the governing body, if any, have in your evaluation of the economics? One of the, and that's not up through now, but you had a.
Management is a.
Management, I mean, what, who is management? Are you talking about the administrator and Lou Levin? Are you talking about the commission and the mayor? If so, how does how does that factor into the equation at all?
Sure, it does. And the management factor is something that we look at from all parts of the governing body, elected officials, appointed officials, administrative members in terms of the outcomes, really, you know, do the management teams work together to produce positive outcomes from a credit perspective? Are, you know, some of this stuff is really financial, so if projections are matching reality. But, you know, cooperation and or positive working relationships can often lead to strong outcomes. And insofar as that happens, that may be a positive, but there are people that, you know, it's sort of, I'm getting into hypotheticals, which I would rather not do, but it is factored in and insofar as it results in a credit impact. Commissioner Kane, do you want to respond to that first, Lou?
Yeah, just a brief comment on Commissioner Walker's initial question. We try to make maintain a relationship with our different analysts and through the course of the year, if there's significant events occur, we'll report those to our analysts. When we have our annual credit review, we actually provided a packet of, and you referred to newspaper articles, of approximately 25 different articles or or some type of releases related to events or development actions that were occurring in the community. So I, the main point is it's an ongoing process.
Lou, are you going to tell them about your telephone conference with General Motors today?
Yeah, and so for example, today on our site visit, we were located at North Point, but in the middle of the site visit, we scheduled a conference call with the plant manager at General Motors. Commissioner Kane assisted us in getting that conference established, but we had the plant manager from General Motors as well as an official from Detroit. And it was a brief conversation, approximately 10 to 15 minutes, but General Motors was able to present information to our analysts about their ongoing plans with the plan, how the plant was doing. And that's that's the type of information we want to get across.
I would say too, when I was the chair of the Economic Development Committee, we had an unpopular time when we actually increased our mill during the recession. And the credit ratings communicated to us directly that because of that positive action, it actually impacted positively our our mill rating. Now, unpopular politically, positive for the credit rating because it showed a willingness to raise revenues in the midst of a crisis. And so that's an example where the management portion showed a willingness to move forward. So that's why, that would be an example also of a management decision.
This slide just speaks broadly to a lot of the questions that you folks have been asking in terms of what things do we consider? As I mentioned, the scorecard above the line is simply quantitative with 13 inputs, but this just goes to show some of the qualitative things that we talk about as a rating committee that could impact the overall credit profile of a municipality. And as I want to mention, the scorecard has a quantitative output on an unadjusted basis. The scorecard has some what we call below the line factors where we can adjust that things that aren't taken into account in those 13 numbers that would affect the credit rating. But even with those adjustments, this scorecard is just a tool, like I said, for transparency and to be illustrative of how our methodology is to be applied. But the most important part of this slide is that the final public rating is ultimately decided by a rating committee, which is a group of senior credit professionals at the firm, who convene every time we decide on the rating. And the final public rating may be different than what the scorecard indicates. Commissioner Murgia?
Thanks, Mayor. So we have a very short timeframe. We have another meeting at seven and you've done a really good job at slowing down and taking commission questions. I appreciate that because I'm definitely no expert at finance, but I have some very specific questions. One of the conversations that Mr. Levin and I have had is about the impact of additional debt on our overall bond rating. And I just have a couple of questions around that topic. And I guess I would like to know, is there a difference when you're reviewing our debt, when you rate it, between good debt and bad debt?
Lou, did you say, the reason I'm looking to Lou is because I think we set aside some time at the end for a question.
I already talked to Lou about this.
For, I think we, in the interest of time, I think we set aside some time for questions afterwards maybe, but I don't.
Yeah, Mayor, maybe if we could just try to wrap up the presentation and then we'll try to reserve 10 minutes and we might be able to even go up to the conference, the commissioner's office for any individual questions, if that's appropriate.
Okay.
Thank you very much, but and that's fine, we can do that. I would just tell you, one of the reasons this particular meeting was so important to me is that I've been here a long time and I know that I still don't have my hands completely around the finance of the unified government. And what really was concerning to me is when the recession hit and I didn't have my hands around things and I didn't know how to make good policy decisions that would improve or maintain at minimum our bond rating and our ability to continue to do business. And then just other incidences that took place in other cities where we saw real disasters. So it's one thing for you to educate me and I greatly appreciate that, but I think what's really the purpose of this was that not for Commissioner Murgia to try to translate finance to eight other commissioners, but for all the commissioners to have a little better understanding of how we maintain our credit rating. So I'm more than willing to meet independently of the rest of the commission, but this is a gigantic topic that should be at the top of the priority list for all of the commissioners that we maintained our bond rating or we just can't do business. So that was kind of my hopes. I know we're pressed on time tonight, but that's my concern with individual meetings.
If I were allowed to, why don't I? Sure, the remaining slides I think are less relevant, so I'll just turn it over to Dave. Scroll down.
Dave McGilchrist with Springsteen, I'm not going to, I'm going to kind of go to the meat of your question.
Thank you.
Because frankly, Moody's, because of regulatory reasons, can't make public statements to specific questions about your rating like that in this setting. That was the idea for the workshop, if we wanted to go upstairs, you had something specific. So they're regulatory, they can't respond to those things because they're only telling part of the, it's telling information to investors and there's only so many investors in the room. So they have limitations in this sort of setting where they wouldn't if we were upstairs or on the sidebar. I'm briefly going to put some meat in.
You can tell me, I mean, Moody's can tell me things in private, but can't tell me things publicly, which is kind of in direct contradiction with politics.
It's from events that are public and reported, we have to get everything that we say approved, which is why I'm trying to stick to the education. I apologize. I'm not really able to answer any questions. Dave can.
I can. Dave McGilchrist with Springsteen, and I'm going to be very direct first. I was here about a month ago and one of the reasons we're having this is because Moody's has the unified government's credit rating somewhat on the brink between going from one category to a lower category. And that would mean that every time you borrow money, you'd have to, you would pay substantially higher interest costs. Because most of your bonds are repaid by property taxes, that would raise property taxes to fund this debt service, which in turn means you may not have as many property taxes to fund operations. So tried to bring it back and really drilled down to what that topic is.
Great.
So I'll be very specific and go with the spirit of your question about avoiding a downgrade. And all this terminology, you've heard a lot of that already, and I'm just going to tell you, you have two ratings, Moody's and S&amp;P. And this is their global rating category, triple A, there's just a handful in Kansas. Both S&amp;P and Moody's have you in the double A category right now. And so, but they have a different, different perspectives on where you are. And so they have these modifiers, one, two, or three. S&amp;P has a plus, nothing in the middle, and a minus. Threes and minuses are at the bottom end, ones and pluses are at the top end. And then they have something called the outlook that says if things, can a positive mean the rain's going to go up or negative, the rain's going to go down? So where are you? Standard and Poor's has you at S&amp;P, S&amp;P has a double A, stable outlook. Moody's has you at double A three, negative outlook. Double A three, negative outlook means first double A three, you're at the bottom end of the double A category. Negative outlook means something like this, that if current trends continue, then you will be downgraded within 12 or 18 months and you've had a negative outlook on unified government for, for a long time.
Current trends with borrowing?
Current trends with all trends. And in this case specifically, and I don't have this, but it was on the rating report and I said this a month ago, precisely they're looking at the fact that you've had a couple of years of structural imbalance, meaning you spent more than you took in on an operating basis. And I think their report is pretty specific. It says if the unified government doesn't return to structural balance in the general fund in 2013, that will put downward pressure on the rating.
So even though we are spending more than we're bringing in and even though we raised taxes multiple times during the last eight years, it's still bottom line, bringing in less money than what we're spending?
Correct, so you have budget deficits. And if, I think the report says that if those continue in 2013, I'm sorry, 14, I apologize, 14, then there's downward pressure on the rating. So downward pressure would mean it would go down to the A category, probably an A1 if it was downgraded.
So is there a difference, sorry, Mayor, but I really, it's important to me to get to these questions. So is there a difference? I go back to this again, you know, Mr. Levin and I've had this conversation multiple times. You know, typically, government doesn't get in the business of issuing debt on projects unless it is a project typically for what we would refer to as social good, which are typically not good financial investments. They're very high risk. Those are typically what we're doing. Is there a difference in how a rating agency would view issuing good debt versus, or I should say, very low risk debt versus high risk debt?
General obligation debt, which is most of your core debt, streets, you know, buildings, the core mission of the unified government and other local governments. I don't know if it's good debt or bad debt, but it's generally good debt. It's not associated with other sorts of higher risk things. You rebuild the streets, you invest in your infrastructure. Again, I think that is low risk debt in what you're describing, but it is all applied against this credit rating, general obligation, because those bonds ultimately are guaranteed by unlimited pro- general obligation, because those bonds ultimately are guaranteed by unlimited property taxes across, you know, your tax base. So if you thought you were going to get assessments and you didn't, you still have to come up with the money through the property tax. There's other types of debt, the star bonds, for instance. That's somewhat outside of this. It's not general obligation debt. It's economic development, it's really separate apart from.
So is there a difference between regular general obligation debt and taxable general obligation debt?
Not from this perspective. The taxable-
All falls into the same category.
As long as you have general obligation. Taxable sometimes means it's related to an economic development project, and so there may be, you know, that kind of depends on how you put the economic development project. But taxable debt, geo-debt, just means the interest rate's going to be a little higher because the investors don't get to, they have to pay taxes on it.
I, I would say, Commissioner, I disagree with the premise, I think, at least if I understood you correctly, that we are involved in riskier debt than non-risky debt.
On projects.
On projects, but I would say-
No, I didn't say that, actually. Mr. Levin can clarify. I, we were talking about issuing debt on projects, just for clarity, and his, when we were, what we were talking about is a particular program, and he was worried about the level of debt, and that the only time we typically issued that kind of debt is when it was a project that someone couldn't do in the fair market world.
I see. I, I understand now. Okay.
Yeah, I, I would concur that, that the majority of our debt is for basic infrastructure services, and that, that's viewed as the, you know, the primary, certainly is one of the primary purposes of the government.
Yeah.
So I'll quickly-
Keep going.
I'll quickly sum up, if you'd like.
Yep, go ahead.
This slide, just go to the third bullet, and that says, as you go down, as you have less credit quality, double A to single A, your interest rates go up, and it depends how much you go up in a basic market. So you're in the double A category, and Moody's is saying if things don't change, you'll end up in the A category. When we had our sale a month ago, that was worth about 50 basis points, which means one-half of 1%. And what that means in dollars is, and I think the mayor asked this question at the bond sale, this says that had you been downgraded before the last bond sale, the interest cost over the life of that transaction would have gone up, funded by property taxes, between $900,000 and $1,300,000. So if they, if you had been downgraded, interest rates would have gone up, and you'd incur higher interest rate costs.
So when Moody's puts us on a negative outlook, or Standard and Poor, whoever does it, they always tell us why, do they not? And the identification of why we're on a negative outlook is primarily due to fund balance-
Correct.
-and debt load? Or is it primarily fund balance?
Did you say anything on this? It's predominantly-
The negative outlook language in the report speaks to the structural imbalance in 13 and projected structural imbalance for 2014.
And structural imbalance means too low of fund balance?
Operating budget.
Right. And we, we, our fund balance at the end of 2013 was projected at $6 million, and at the end of 2014, without budget adjustments, it will go down to $2 million. Is that right?
Yeah, it's, that, that's how we projected it on, on a budget basis. There, there's two different methods of accounting, and I, I don't really want to get into those-
I wish you would not.
...this evening, but, but the basic premise is, we, we had two consecutive years of increased fund balance, and I, and I don't want to neglect that, that occurred 20, 2011, 2012. We had a, a negative situation in 2013, as that is our continued projection for 14. So I think what both, both of our credit agencies review is, they would like us to, to get back to the, the term structural balance, and, and that's where I started this evening on, that was the language that was used in the Chicago downgrade.
Okay.
So 11 and 12, you did some good. You were still in a low area. Then it went down in 13, you know, 13, and it's programmed to go down more in 14. And they're telling you, if it goes down more in 14, there's a hype, there's a probability that you will be downgraded.
So, go ahead.
Is that okay? Sorry, Mayor. So they review this every year, correct?
Review it whenever they want to.
Really? Great.
Did I mention our ratings reviewed on an ongoing basis?
Okay, okay.
So we could be downgraded anytime. It's not just at our annual-
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, you could send us a letter tomorrow.
Obviously, this outstanding conversation will increase your view of our city overall, and I appreciate that being factored into our credit rating.
And any new material information? If there was new material information, it's not just-
Well, and new material information, for instance, could be Saturday at our strategic plan, if we issue a statement that one of our priorities for our budget moving forward is increasing fund balance, that, and showed a commitment to that, that would perhaps be perceived in a positive light.
Yes, two, in two ways. One, your comment earlier about you made the tough, the governing body and management made the tough decision to raise taxes when, you know, it was difficult. That is a positive from a management perspective, management criteria. And two, when the money shows up, it's a positive in the financial area.
That's great.
Dave, so I just have two follow-up questions on that. I mean, Dave, really, what was our option?
What was your option in raising taxes?
Yeah, as our financial advisor, what was our option?
Well, well, first, I understand there's a lot of difficulty in getting a structural budget balance.
Right.
I mean, it's services, it's taxes, and so, I mean, you always have the, I mean, and I say this publicly to people, I think credit, good credit ratings are better than bad ones. You may have situ, any entity may have situations where they need to keep services in, so you, you put it into the mix.
This is, and to just sum it up for me, this is what I would like to see that's, that would be different than what I've seen in the past. I would like to see us not wait until the last minute of, of a budget, and we're moving in that direction right now, where our only option isn't to raise taxes. I, I would like to see us work closer with you as our financial advisor to figure out how to turn this trend around, how to go from a double A negative to a triple A positive. I don't want to, I don't want to go in the other direction. I want to see a strategy. And I personally have brought forward an idea that may, in a very small way, influence that. If that's not going to work, I'm okay with that, but what I need, I think, from our staff and from our financial advisor, is to then bring forward ways that will work, because I'm sure you're also a financial advisor for other counties and other cities, and hopefully sometime in your lifetime, you've seen counties and cities go from a double A to a triple A.
Yes.
Okay, so there is a way to get there. And so if, I would like to have that conversation at some point where we can get on the right path instead of going in the wrong direction.
Thank you. Mr. Levin, any closing comments?
No, I, I think we're, we're looking forward to our Saturday session with the commission, and-
That was hard for him to say.
And, and I, and I think I can speak for Mr. McGilvery. He, he plans on being there also, so I'm cer, certain, certain he would be glad to follow up with some of the questions that have been raised this evening. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. I want to thank Moody's for coming out and for your site visit, for taking the time to tour our community, to hear about the great things that are happening here, and also to help us better understand the matrix of, the matrix that goes into establishing a credit rating. It's one of those things that is very much behind the scenes, but significantly important from a policy-level decision-making for this commission. We have to protect our credit rating because, and we're the only ones that can. We have the most ability to impact this credit rating of anyone. You know, we can't raise the median household income by $50,000 overnight. That would improve our credit rating. But we can make good management decisions, we can balance the books, we can build our fund balance. By doing those things in a smart, progressive way, and showing that trend over time, it's going to maintain our credit rating and help us ultimately save money. Because as our credit rating goes down, our ability to borrow goes down, and the interest we pay goes up, so we can do fewer projects, fewer streets, fewer sewers, and protecting that fund balance is very important. So I appreciate all of you for coming today, and it was rivetingly exciting and entertaining, as advertised. So thank you very much, and thank you to the commission. It is 7 o'clock, and we are ready for our next meeting. I'm going to give the commission a five-minute break, recess, and we will be back at 7:05 to begin our meeting.